Pledge of limitations to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, hanging up this for all.
Has everybody had a chance to review last month's minutes? Is there any questions or corrections? I'll take the motion to have the secretary file them. Motion by Deb. Seconded by Greg. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Alright, poll of comments.
I have a public comment.
Yep.
I'm gonna take a little extra time here because this just happened today.
Name and address please.
Yama Hunt, 162 Church Street, Seven Valleys Bay, around the corner. I was ready to leave today to go away. And parked down the street by the gate was an oversized sewer tank truck blocking the road. Those trucks constantly are going up and down there, so when we confront the sewer authority, they tell you it is your guys' job to tell them that they either can't do it, to get it fixed properly, it needs all kind of replacement work. It was not in there to begin with. So, one of yous better get with them because we're gonna lock gates and knock them through. Because, I mean, you know, they knock them down, it's just awful. Next. Todd, do you issue grant permits? What about weeds? You in charge of weeds in the town?
Yeah, if I get a complaint.
Okay, back? It's behind Main Street, like where Mark would used to live at the old, uh, Warhol.
Okay.
That needs to be cleaned up and cleaned out and fenced, put around it. Keeps little kids out.
The old Warhol there?
Yep.
On Church Street?
Yeah, it's behind Church Street. So that needs to be cleaned up, cleaned out, and fenced, put around it. Next. Did you give Todd permission or give him a phone to use to transfer funds from one bank to the other?
From Oars Town?
From Oars Town to Simplicity, is that what you're using?
No.
What are you using?
Pliggett.
Okay, whatever. Did you ever warn him? Are you using your own personal phone?
For rural business, yeah.
I would advise you to get him a phone because that's not a very good idea.
I agree, I would really go for a phone actually, because I don't like using my personal phone for business.
Yeah, too many people.
I agree.
It's actually been on my, uh, tab for a while.
Now, there's a banking law. I think it's called something seventy-eight in the state of Pennsylvania. You can't take pictures of, or write a check and take pictures and send money in rural accounts from one bank to the other bank unless it's more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars in your account. And you're doing it because the state says you can't have more than that. So I would advise you to be very careful just because you're pissed off with Oars Town Bank.
I don't understand what you're saying. Are you saying I transferred money using a phone?
Didn't you this month say you transferred money from one bank to another bank?
Yeah, we do that electronically across the internet.
That's right. So you have to use your phone to do that?
No.
You're using internet?
It's ACH through the internet, correct, yep.
But why are you doing it, is what I'd like to know.
Because Pliggett has a much higher interest rate than Oars Town Bank.
Okay.
And Oars Town is charging exorbitant fees.
Yeah, we know that. But some of the other ones are gonna do the same. I'm not saying you have to stay at Oars Town Bank because I've got issues with them too. But I'm just telling you, watch where you're transferring from one bank to the other bank.
I've been transferring municipal funds for thirty years, I understand what the laws are. And, and our books are audited every year and they know what the transfers are. Bank statements are public record. If you'd like to see them, you're more than welcome to just give me a call or shoot me an email.
I'm just warning you, be careful.
Thank you.
I'm not getting anywhere here. I'll, I'll take care of it on my end and then we'll talk about it from the banking side. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. So, so the sewer truck at the, at the pump station?
That pumping station?
They access that through that gate down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or one of them, one of them.
Okay.
And they knocked the gate off quite a few times and it took them months to repair it.
Which, they, do they come down off, like at the steep one or they come in off of the?
No, they come down to steep one. If you're going past our place, they'll go in and go down towards the barn and then they back up. And when they're pumping all day long and all night long, it's constantly one after the other. But, that, that there pumping station doesn't work.
Is it, is it get, was it alarm walls that they gotta go in there and do that?
No, they're just working there constantly. Like, all, all week long, there's been their sewer trucks backing up, going down, and they're in there working and they're working on pumps because it doesn't work.
Sounds like, sounds like they're bypass pumping because the pumps aren't flowing.
Correct, that's what they did.
Because if it happens again, we're, we're just gonna call nine-one-one like we did before because it runs out into the meadow. We don't have cows there yet for the summer. But if it continues, they're gonna be in deep.
Well, yeah, if they're trying to bypass pump and there's stuff coming out of there and it's going into anywhere but their truck, that somebody, they got issues.
Well, they got big issues there.
When the trucks are there, it's fine. It's when, before the trucks get there. It's not, when they're sucking into the trucks, there's nothing going in the meadow. Before they get there, it's overflowing. That's why they get their trucks.
But what I don't understand is everybody here pays sewer rent. And, and when you tell them, they say, well, it's, you know, it's rural council's authority to complain and stick up for the people, you know, unless they say something, we can't do nothing about it. And we say, well, why are you not fixing this one? Well, we're working on the Logan's Reserve Development or we're working on this development and it's just getting to be downright banging ass. So somebody please work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Two hundred thousand dollar pump. And that's our responsibility?
No.
No, it's not, okay.
What, what our responsibility is, is making sure that any, I mean, they're obviously there because it's an immediate need situation, keeping the sewage from leaking out. So, and, and again, from the description that she just gave, I think it's due to some problems with, with the pump station, which if you read this month's report from April, you saw there's quite a bit of that. So, but you have the authority as the rural council to make sure that you not do damage, that they're using the appropriate right of ways and the appropriate accesses and not breaking any rules by having the trucks where they're at. Again, taking into account that this is probably an emergency situation, that they have to get in there and do some pumping and, and trucking around to the next pump station because it'd be problems with the pump. But obviously, any damage that they do to Mrs. Hunt's property or anything else, their contractor who's doing the work should be held accountable for it.
So who, who put the gates up? Who drew gates on this?
They belonged to us because they were put there so that when the rail trail was made, they were put there so that we opened the gates to go across and close them to keep people from parking and using and go down on the rail trail.
Is there a right of way to new age? For the trucks?
No. They just got permission somewhere and...
They're using an old existing tractor, tractor crossing.
Yeah.
And then, and then years later, they put the one in down closer to Tom. The one across from him, the one that goes in on an angle into the field. But that was where the pump station is, is probably the original way they got into those fields down there, obviously. There and down.
The railroad does, um...
The railroad does, um, somebody.
Fifty or a hundred feet, whatever it is, from center of the...
They run that. The rail trail runs that from the railroad.
They wouldn't put a sewer pumping station in without some sort of access. It's probably in the documents when the other person worked. But again, they're, they're, you know, if they're doing damage, they need to be held accountable.
But we just thought, I, you know, it's a pain in the butt to listen to all the backup noises and stuff like that.
Unfortunately, that pump station is notorious for having problems.
That's right. And we need to get them to fix it or replace it. But that's the big thing. Yeah, it's hard, you know. We don't have sewer, but we put up with it, correct?
Alright. Any other public comment?
So we need to reach out to the sewer authority just under, brought to our attention that it's an ongoing thing that they...
You know, it's not, excuse me, it's an ongoing thing that when it rains real hard, it gets so many stones washed off the street that the fire company has postponed bingo because they can't flush the toilets and those houses in that area, including the lady that lives across the street, they can't flush their toilets. Because it, you know, and then they'll come pump those little sewer holes out and then it'll work for a while. So they have to get their act together and somebody has to give them their case. You guys.
Here's the one thing, I was gonna say this with the sewer authority report, but if you look at the last page, Wednesday, April sixteenth, pump number two, this is the Main Street pump station, high wet well level, number two pump was clogged with rags. Now, obviously, somebody put something in the sewer they weren't supposed to.
Yep.
Just, just saying, the alternator wasn't working. There, that's just one example of, of, you know, what, what has happened there. We'll do more detail later, just so you know, I mean, these things are...
Yeah, we know things are in there that shouldn't be in, in there. But how can we address how to get rid of that situation? Screens? No?
Well, the problem with the screen is then the rag is gonna go against the screen and you're gonna end up with backups.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Engineer report, Church Street.
Anything to report there? Wednesday morning will be a pre-construction meeting. They are planning to start construction next Monday, the night. Expect to last about four weeks. The street will be open, but there will be some delays, traffic control. While they're going to work along the street there at the sidewalks. Do need a location for them to put two projects, or put a project sign. I think I do have a location, but I need to confirm that there at sixty-two Church Street. And the fire company granted permission for restitution to, to their stating here at the fire hall. Yeah.
Okay, anyone Church Street? South Street?
Contract was just finalized and they're now in the process of trying to schedule a reconstruction meeting, so I do not know a date when they plan on starting that work yet.
I've got a timeline.
I, I don't know that, okay, now. But that, that should not be four weeks. Maybe two, two and a half, tight time to...
Anyone else on South Street? Anyone else from engineer? Solicitor report.
Nothing new on mediation. I believe we'll have a state police report next month, correct? Just, just one thing general for everybody's information. If you get a text message purportedly from Pendot or the Pennsylvania Turnpike saying they are going through your driver's license or you owe money or they're putting you in jail, it is a scam. They will not contact you by text or by email, they will contact you by mail. I got one yesterday in the international code, it was the Philippines.
Yeah.
I don't even know if they have easy pass in the Philippines. But anyway, just, just a word, just a word, word of warning to everybody. It's sort of like Mrs. Hunt was saying, beware of scammers out there. When in doubt, check it out.
Yeah.
That's, that's all we have, unless anybody's question.
That, I see.
Anything else with solicitor?
Zoning and code enforcement report, everybody have a copy of it? If not, there's a couple copies on here. Don't have, uh, anything in particular to talk about other than eighty-two Oak Street. I don't know if anyone took those, but the dwelling unit was demolished. They did get a permit to do renovations to the existing dwelling. But then the contractor and/or I guess the owner decided they were just gonna demo it. But they need a different permit or a new structure. But unfortunately, they started framing up today before they even applied for another permit. So, the building code official will probably be out to issue a stop board order tomorrow. There is a meeting scheduled for Wednesday here where the building code official is gonna be meeting with the contractor to talk about it.
Todd, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I had someone ask me, can they get fined for this?
They could if they don't plead into compliance, yeah.
Oh, okay, just somebody asked me.
And the building code official told me today that if they don't comply, it could be a thousand dollars.
Question, is that wait state meeting, is that a public meeting?
No, that's just with contractor.
And locators, probably.
Utility.
Anything else on zoning codes? Fire company, I don't see anybody in Doug's round here. Uh, regional parks.
Todd, if you have anything, I'll, I'll take, I'll take the, the meeting that was held, uh, May the thirteenth. It was, it was virtual. The renovation project for the YMCA permit was obtained, contractor is definitely scheduled. They begin on the nineteenth of May, the time of substantial completion. Is slated for the end of January. On the childcare portion of it, the summer camp will begin on Wednesdays, not a week camp. And there's fifty kiddos that are getting serviced for that, uh, that camp. Branch offices during the construction are temporarily moved to the lobby of their gym and the tech center, training room is gonna be used for meetings. The summer social at the Farmers Fields is gonna move to September. The pumpkin trail has a date of October eleventh. Spring Grove Intermediate School will be a backup for weather. Spring Grove Park, Spring Grove Borough Park will be having a Christmas July five K. It's kinda like Christmas in July five K on July twenty-sixth, nine AM, leaving from their recreation center down by the bus terminal. They're working on, kids working on a Seven Valleys Borough, having a back-to-school movie night end of August. More details will, will follow. The, the playground situation here is, New York County Parks is working on a maintenance agreement. And the engineer hopes to have drawings and renderings in a couple months. Next meeting is July eighth, five-thirty at the Little Creek Park. And if I didn't send it to you electronically today, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you're, but yeah.
I, I didn't.
It's all blurred together today.
Alright, anything else on parks? Alright, unfinished business?
As you know, last month, council accepted resignation of Beth Connor from the zoning hearing board. We put out there that there is an opening, we haven't received any meetings yet at this point in time. So that still remains open. Anyone's interested, wants to learn a little more about it, feel free to let me know. I can use some resources that are online. And then also, just something to think about, we also need an alternate. I didn't get official resignation yet, but I was contacted by Beth Culkel and she indicated she will probably resign from the zoning hearing board. And again, I didn't get any official notification, but Larry Garland, who knows, is moving from the borough. So that will be a position on the planning commission as well. So if anyone's interested, shoot me an email, give me a call. I can fill you a little more about what the responsibilities are and then get the names here to council.
Has anybody had interest so far? Good on that?
Yep.
New assessment for thirty-five, thirty-seven?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with council three months ago tomorrow. Council took action to conditionally assign a sewer EDU to thirty-five, thirty-seven Church Street. And one of the condition, well, the only condition was that the property would get final and proper approval from the zoning hearing board for use of that third dwelling. I did email the application and everything to Southern Management, who handles that for them. And then about a month ago or so, I did get a call from attorney Calm, who's representing Mr. Landis. And he and I had a conversation and, and we talked about what the challenges are to meet with the zoning board. And I have not had another word since. So, based on your motion, that EDU will become available again after tomorrow. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, so it's in the minutes.
Anybody question on that? Main Street, rail trail?
Um, the next two are kind of tied together. My understanding is, and again, a lot depends on weather, but it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty good week. My understanding is that they plan to open up the overpass, the closed bridge there, next week. At the same time, as you probably have seen, the stop bar and the stop sign will take effect and will replace the yield sign. And I see they do have some flashing signs here now that, if people wear that as well. That's all I have on that, unless someone had anything differently.
Any other unfinished business? New business doesn't help our business? Anybody have anything for now? Treasurer's report. Alright. We're gonna work from the back page and go forward. Uh, the expense, about midway, you'll see, uh, electronic fund transfers in head-to-head. We always pay that with a check through Liquid Fuels Fund. That'll still be paid from Liquid Fuels, but just to avoid missing any payments or anything, just to make it easier, I set up automatic payment through general fund, which, you know, at the end of the year, the Liquid Fuels Fund will reimburse the general fund for that streetlight expenses for each month. There's the next page forward, you'll see the last line item there. Tri-Community Ambulance has closed out all their financial accounts, they're now officially done, over, ceased operations. The fund balance that they had, as you recall, was gonna be transferred over to the borough to be transferred into a building fund. That amount was thirty-four thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. If you go to the next page, you know, I have a breakdown of each of the funds. We'll begin balance the income, expenses, and then I show a column there for transfers. And then with the balances that each of their funds is on May thirty-first. So if you look there in the transfer column out of the Pliggett prime, which is our general account, I transferred forty thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And if you look down below, the newly established building fund, thirty-eight thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents was transferred into that. And I have a footnote at the bottom, four thousand dollars of that was February, March, April, and May rent from well span. January's rent still went to Tri-Community Ambulance. And then you get thirty-four thousand, eleven dollars, twenty-eight cents of that talent that was transferred from, Tri-Community makes up the other part of the eight thousand. And then the other fund that was created through Pliggett is the Recreation Fund. And you'll see the two thousand dollars was transferred in there. That was a donation that we received from Brandon. And then this month, which is June, you'll see an additional two thousand five hundred go in, which the board already, council already authorized to be transferred into that fund out of our general fund budget. So that's, that balance will be forty-five hundred. Anybody have any questions?
Just so nobody has any confusion, remember, the building fund is basically for maintenance and improvements in this building. That's pursuant to the court order when the ambulance club dissolve. We're obligated to take that money when we received it and put it into funding exclusively for use for maintenance and upkeep of this building. So it's not like we're accumulating money to build somewhere else or doing anything, just so everybody's clear on that.
Okay, no questions? Take a motion to approve, accept, and possibly for all that. And for treasurer to pay any regular bills over the next month until the next meeting. So, move. Motion by Bill. Seconded by Greg Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone else for treasurer?
No.
Alright, secretary.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I've been thinking about the cell phone myself because I get so many junk calls that unless, if it's a spam or potential spam or a number I don't recognize, I don't pick it up. Sometimes it may or may not be a borough call, so I am gonna get some information on plans and phones and, um, so that the borough has a permanent phone number. And I'm gonna bring that back to council next month and ask that you consider a separate, independent phone number for the borough. Uh, York County Burbs Association quarterly dinner meeting, that will be held on June twenty-sixth at Rocky Bridge County Park. Need to let me know by June twentieth if you're planning to attend and I can do the RSVP for you. Just wanted to give you a heads up and probably put this on the agenda next month for formal action. But the park of York and Adams County, it does the rail trail ten miler every year. The benefit, uh, yard, it's gonna be held August twenty-third. Again, they'll need to use some borough streets between like seven forty-five and, and eight-thirty AM. So I will probably put that on the agenda for next month, just for formal action, except them using their streets. I believe they start the fire hall, come up Main Street, back Maple Street, and then they cut down there around thirty-five Maple, down across someone's property, I believe, and then they're on the rail trail, so. Weed spraying, Maple's not a good one for that to happen. I did check with the maintenance department today, they're scheduled to come out and do that on Wednesday morning. Of course, not going to this section of church, it's gonna be tore down. So hopefully that will work out. And the last thing is, just a reminder, I did send a follow-up email to H and H contractors regarding that chipping curb paint. And I haven't heard back, he just came back through vacation today, so.
Travis?
Yes. That's all I have.
And the secretary? Mayor's not here. Just, just to note, he and Cheryl are at the Pennsylvania State Association of Burbs Annual Conference. Lean's still four? Yes, and that includes, I'm going to, the two that are listed on the zoning and code report, I'm gonna be removing those because they're no longer violations, they're now the new status. So I'm gonna, they, that includes those two, that four. Uh, sewer love the meeting?
Again, the only thing I'd suggest, you look at the last two pages of all the problems that they had to deal with with pumps and there's some barriers throughout. The only other thing is, if you look at their expense report, the Valley Road pump station's already twenty-two thousand dollars over budget for the year. So, I know they're planning to do some things to it, but, uh, you know, again, just to follow up what was mentioned earlier, there are definite problems. And you'll probably see the bypass trucks there more often, unfortunately, just make sure they do...
We'll take care of it.
Don't do any damage, that's all. Let us know, please.
I mean, they can unlock the gate and go in at Gladfeller Station and drive up and then drive out down to the other end, but they don't seem to wanna do that.
Well, depending on who the drivers are, if it's like any other businesses, I hope business staying around, you got new people all the time and somebody may not know. So Todd, Todd will follow up with them to see that everything's done right. But, and I tell everybody this, if you get a chance to take pictures of any damage, if you get any pic, to do anything, that, that's what we need to try to do things about.
Alright. Todd, do you have anything else?
No.
What? No, same?
No.
Alright.
Yep.
The, on the bridge up here, stop bar, stop sign, so now we're at a stop sign. Again, stop bar is just basically a painted bar. Okay, 'cause, you know, people might have to see stop bar and they think, well, maybe there's gonna be a stop bar or a planer. Rodney did move, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just thinking down the road. It won't be called soon, I hope, but we'll be looking for somebody to hand out the newsletters. Doggone. Okay, Mark?
No.
Deb?
Oh, Greg, sorry.
Deb?
Yeah, hi, Deb.
Yeah, I do. And I'm not happy. I've lived in this town fifty-two years. And I am appalled what has happened to this town. I was in, on Borough Council when Lynn Krebs was president. And we never, ever had any of this carrying on like we do today. And then I get someone to go and send me a thing from their phone to my phone, find out that I was on this Seven Valleys Borough News anonymous number, calling me out and saying, oh, she was supposed to resign, but I guess she didn't get the right person, so she didn't. No, that's not the reason. I stayed on because my health has improved some. What I have wrong with me, I will never, ever be able to get rid of it. It's going to get worse as time goes on. And my doctor told me, you keep doing what you've been doing, don't sit around, try to walk more, and I stayed on for a reason, and that is the reason why. Not because I didn't get the pick, the person I wanted. That's not the reason. And then what really upset me, they had somebody else on this committee that said, oh, another person should be off. No, that is not how things work. I think of, I respect every one of these people and I respect my neighbors. I help my neighbors, but this has got to stop. That we are, this town has become a laughing stock. And I'm telling you, this is my opinion, that it all started with that Seven Valleys Borough News. This has got to stop. We need to be nice to everybody. But I stayed on for a reason. I didn't do it because, oh, I didn't have it, I didn't pick the right person. No. I, whoever did that, that is not the reason I stayed on. And I'm very upset and I better not find out that my name, my council position is in that paper, in that Borough News again. It better not happen again. And I was upset when they sent that to me and I thought, how dare they? And I did not resign because, oh, I didn't get the right person. That is not the reason why. I stayed on because my health has improved. I take medicine four times a day and yes, my health will get worse as time goes on. Because what I have wrong with me is no cure for it. And it needs to stop. Don't ever, whoever did that, that, don't ever put that in the Borough News again. It's, it's, it's Seven, no, it's a Seven Valleys Borough News. And this person sent it to me, they don't even live here. And they sent this to me and, and I screened, they screenshotted it and I was really upset when I found out that I was, when that said she, I know it was me because I'm the only woman on this council. And I was upset. I don't wanna see it, I don't wanna see it again because I'm telling you, these people would be sending me this stuff. I don't want it again. That's all I have to say.
All right, we will hook them back up for public comment.
Uh, Jessica Dallas, uh, Pidu Cherry Street. Um, this is for Todd. Um, so I know that, uh, we've got three five hundred in the playground account or will.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so if that officially can set up, how's the information to set up with Kate Kate?
She's aware.
Okay, uh, just because I wanna help create, um, an online donation link.
Yeah.
So I just, I don't know, maybe we need to get together so that can create, or like we can create a link for it and.
I'll, I'll, I'll catch up a bit, bit, talk about.
Okay. Oh, so for anybody who wanted to see what playground we were thinking, the Little Creek Playground that Phil, you had said, um, I went to a fundraiser there and I said to Kate, that's, I think that's exactly what we want.
The tall one?
Yeah, I said, we don't have wide real estate, but we have tall. So if anybody wants to see what the playground would look like, it would be that little tall one. Um, and then Todd, for an independent phone, um, I think you can get a new phone number for like ten dollars a month for, like, on Google. And then it comes in through like a separate line. Um, so I do that for my business where I have all my business numbers coming to one phone. So this is something to think about.
Thank you.
Instead of having like, you know, your pockets full.
That's one thing I dreaded. Okay, just a quick question, where, where's that little playground located?
Todd? Excuse me. When you're talking about the playground, don't forget there's a right of way that the Lau Farm has down through that playground.
I don't think it interferes with that.
Are you on the left side of the street?
Yes. It's the civilian side.
Because states getting testy with the farmers, we're getting fines for going across the creek to get into the fields. So we have to start using the right of ways.
Go through the creek or across the creek?
Well, we're gonna cross the creek. Pick on us, is what they do.
Disturbing the trout.
Yeah. Putting a little dirt farther downstream. Might put two drops of oil there.
Oh, don't say that.
Anybody else? Thanks, everybody, for coming. Have a good evening.